There we go.
You gotta wave for me.
Okay, we're good? Let me know. Give me the high sign. We're good. I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, for trustee Lefier.
Aye.
Trustee Key. Uh, Key. Trustee Lefier.
Aye.
Um, trustee Svetzer.
Aye.
Oh geez.
Mayor Colma.
Hi.
Motion passes.
You didn't. I don't. Did you ask trustee Lefier?
Ye- yes, yes.
Okay, sorry.
I can comment now.
You can't, yeah, it's a little... Okay. Okay, does any board member have anything to disclose regarding the, um, agenda item for this workshop?
Not for this workshop, no.
Okay.
I do not.
You do not? Okay, I do not. Renee?
Svetzer, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Corfia, you wanna read that?
Sure. The board will have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting, and also on general matters at the end of the meeting. Speakers can comment once each in each comment window if comment is on a specific agenda item and is not debate, deposition, or panel discussion. Speakers must step to the front of the room if disvable. Alternatively, they may provide comments from where they are seated. If an attendee is participating in a web conference that now takes such a zoom, the board will announce how attendees should signal that they wish to comment. This may differ by platform, but is typically a motion through raise your hand feature, which you are using tonight. So if you wish to comment, please raise your hand. I do not respond to comments in chat. If you have a comment you wish we'd ask before, please put it in the Q and A section. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be an exemption for any category of people protected by New York State laws. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on any given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they have to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, only interact with speakers during their remarks for the purpose of clarification or information. Speakers must observe the common accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties and their representatives may address the board by written communications to villageboard@villagefitzford.com. All written communications will become part of the public record and will be attached to the minutes before the meeting. At the same request, written communications will be read aloud by the board at the meeting and will adhere to the three-minute time limit. Three-minute time limit, I shouldn't speak. If printed materials or other media are provided by attendees during the meeting, they must be submitted to the village board with optional distribution to audience members. All materials will be part of the public record. Private distribution of materials to audience members only is prohibited. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Wow, that's thoughtful. Okay, so the purpose of, uh, this particular meeting is really a workshop, but I know we are waiting for some of the new associates to show up. But I know Lisa, you wanted to...
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Lisa Cole, 44 South Main Street. Um, this is just, I would like to address the board in regards to, um, some comments that I have about the meetings, the trustee meetings. Um, I'm gonna read this, 'cause I'll, it'll sound better if I read it. Um, I'm just concerned that there's been numerous special meetings and changing times and dates now allowing for consistency, which is making it difficult for village residents to really follow some of these really important things that you guys are working on. And I know that there's so many people that really want to understand and want to kind of follow the progress that you guys are making. So, just kind of take that, uh, we're gonna solve, take that as a comment. Meeting minutes and YouTube videos are out very late. So it's really hard for us to kind of follow things when it's, you know, sometimes days are been a week after the meeting for us to kind of keep up to date so that we can follow what's happening. Also, Zoom meetings, they're really hard. I mean, I try to do some constant Zoom meetings. They're hard to understand. If you're not like right on top of the, um, the speaker, it's hard to hear what's happening in the room. So, I don't know what to do about that, but that's, that's just a comment I want to make. And then the last thing is, if we could possibly, I know there's so many great things that are happening, and there's a lot of things that the village residents are interested in hearing, and I was wondering if there's any way that when the agenda is set, that we could put things that are really important to residents in the beginning, and then maybe do the house cleaning things at the end, because I know that sometimes meetings are so long, and I've tried to get at it, and by the time anything that my concern is up, I'm gonna go to sleep or I have to go to bed. So if we can maybe put like the rest, the port rest in things in the beginning so that people can really kind of be awake and ready to care about, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for your comment.
Can I just step housekeeping issue? You might want to hold some lines behind you so we can see you better, 'cause you're all so...
Oh, is it too bright? Yeah, I'll do that. I got it, thank you, yeah. Okay. Um, do we kind of want to start in a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely.
While we're waiting for our...
Yeah, I know you have a meeting after this, so I...
Just to set this up, this is, um, just a workshop regarding, um, the canal path. Uh, as you know, there's been erosion and issues on the canal path, and hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we haven't gotten the confirmation date yet, but hopefully within the next couple of weeks, the canal park engineers are coming down and they're gonna redo that embankment and shore it up. So, uh, we're looking forward to that. So, uh, really what we're looking at, um, hi, come on up. Uh, today is improving our canal path, once we have that embankment, uh, shored up.
Sure.
That's why you folks are here.
Thank you.
How do I refer to your firm? How do you refer to, how do you, um, Fisher? I mean, how do we, what do we, hi, you guys.
Yeah.
Hi, welcome.
I'll introduce myself and then my associate. So, uh, Trowbridge Wolf Michaels is a Fisher Associates Landscape Architecture Studio.
Okay.
So Fisher Associates acquired Trowbridge and Wolf last year.
Okay.
And, uh, now we work under the same umbrella.
Okay.
So, great news for, uh, people in Rochester area that this, uh, dynamic landscape architecture firm is now at their doorstep and at their fingertips. So, um, my name is John Reddington. I'm a landscape architect and the project manager for this. We, uh, replied to an open RFP that the village put out, and, uh, thankfully we were awarded the, the contract to begin work on a concept plan and, uh, eventually to submit to the consolidated funding application. With me today, to my right...
Frank Armento, I'm the planning group manager at Fisher.
Cool.
And I'm here to discuss the grant and, uh, the grant application that we're looking to, to put in, in a very short...
Yes.
...time period.
Immediately.
Yes, and, um, I'm Sarah Martin. I'm an associate planner with Fisher, so I work very closely with Frank. And, um, I'm also here to talk about the grant application and see what we can get in next week.
Great. Well, welcome to everybody.
And I believe Sarah and Renee had worked on, uh, the bike share program...
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Um, so yeah, as mentioned, we're here today really as a, as a work session exercise. So, um, the consolidated funding application is due to the state, um, at the end of the month, July 29th. So, uh, our goal today is really to come out of this meeting with clear direction and, and establish some dialogue between our firm and the board, and, and really leave this meeting so we can, uh, begin preparation, uh, of the plan and the application itself. So we have a few agenda items that I'll touch on, and then I think the meeting might be circular in nature where we go from, you know, what are we looking to incorporate in this concept plan to how does that, uh, relate to the actual application. So, uh, agenda item number two is the village goals and objectives for the CFA. So with that, you know, we want to identify, uh, specific projects, um, that are to be included in the concept plan. Um, we're looking to identify the limits of this concept plan. Um, this all relates to budget and funding, right? So when we submit a application, we'll also be doing, uh, an estimate or a, a opinion of probable costs of the proposed elements, um, which the state then digests and then, um, you know, awards grant money under a different, number of different grants applicable to our, uh, application. Um, in terms of our divisional labor, so I'm kind of a landscape architect, uh, in charge of the concept plan, and, you know, I can answer questions on design, construction, things like that. Frank and Sarah are very well versed in the funding, and they've done these applications numerous times before. We're doing a couple other in process.
You're so helpful.
So, um, you know, we have a wide range of skillset that I hope will serve the village well.
Great.
Um, so initially, we have a couple of questions for the village. Are you registered on the CFA portal? It sounds like you were from earlier discussion. That's great. So we'll, after this meeting, get the login information and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, has the village previously registered in Grants Gateway? I think we just kind of answered that as well. Um, so the second, or the third agenda item is, is under the planning umbrella, and we have attached to the packet for the board, and, uh, there were some extra copies on the table if you wanted to follow on, so...
Yeah, I think some people...
Yeah, well, right now, we're looking at the, um, the eight and a half by 11. It's basically the government information system, Monroe County mapping. Sarah can speak to that. So what we wanted to do with this mapping is to kind of clearly identify, uh, as best as possible, public-private ownership. Um, you know, we know on the north side that gas and electric hit right of way, um, that abuts the powers farm, um, and things of that nature. So when we talk about, you know, these improvements, we need to, um, also talk about, uh, who owns the land we're talking about. So, I thought it'd be good to have this diagram to refer back to. Um, during the RFP process, um, and, uh, noted in the RFP was, um, the improvements were to be relative to Zone Four identified on the comprehensive plan from 2019. So we've identified what that, uh, area looks like on this GIS map and its, its relationship to the waterfront itself. Um, Sarah can speak to the next couple of bullet point items, which, so we did a little bit of research and, and, you know, we've all been in, um, part of these projects before, myself with the Village of Fairport, as, as you know from my presentation in May. Um, and, um, she can speak a little bit to that and, and what we, uh, you know, the direction this is taking as far as, uh, successful grant applications in the past, um, and things of that nature.
Sure. Um, all right, so I went ahead and reviewed some recently submitted, um, canal projects. I guess you could say for villages, towns, municipalities along the Erie Canal that have been successful in the past. Um, two that I've called out here that you might want to refer back to later at your leisure are, um, they're both in North Tonamondo. Uh, the Erie Canal like path extension, which received LWRP and Canalways grant funding, and also the Erie Canal Sweeney Trail extension in North Tonamondo. So that got Canalways, uh, grant funding. Um, and then John's also called out that the Village of Fairport did get, um, Canal bicentennial funding, both through the Canal Corps and through New York State Parks. So the reason we went through and identified some of these is to give us a better idea of what grants you may want to pursue for your project. Um, and it, it depends on what really you're trying to pursue. So we've identified four different grants that you can look at in the consolidating funding application that might be useful for any improvement projects you're doing. That's the LWRP, uh, the Canalways grant, uh, New York State Parks grant funding, and the Empire State Development grant funding. So once we get a little bit of a better idea of your goals and objectives for this project, um, get a better idea of the type of designs that John's going to be doing, we can really hone in and decide, do we want to include all of these grants? Are only one or two applicable, and we'll take it from there. But since it's a consolidated application, you know, it's really easy to customize those things.
Good. Yeah, you know, there's so many different grants and ruling parts out there. Sometimes it's difficult to sort through them, so we're thankful for your expertise.
And that's the beauty of the consolid, really the whole reason for the consolidating this, so that all of these come together in one application. So when you start the application, you choose those programs that are most applicable to your project, and then all of that information kind of gets ruled as the application.
Yeah.
And the questions that are asked and that we're responsible for answering are all segregated, but related to all of those programs. They're all part of the same questionnaire.
And then my understanding too, 'cause, you know, just working with the portal a little bit, um, it's saved, and so we can essentially clone it.
Correct.
They call it cloning it if we wanted, which I'm, because, you know, once you at least get a lot of the information, and then it's there.
Absolutely.
For future grants, so that's a good thing.
And we've, we've done that multiple times, and it's been very beneficial. So we had a grant that we did for the city of Rochester last year. Um, we applied for three programs, and we were successful on two.
Oh wow.
And so we're resubmitting on the one that we were unsuccessful for this year. Uh, but we're able to clone that application.
And just...
Just pick that one program, and it sort of, it kind of spits out what we had done last year for only that grant program, and then we can modify.
Yeah, based on tweaking.
Based on tweaking, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I love that.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Excellent. Um, so, as you know, one of the components of our application will be a concept plan that we'll develop, and what we've done is kind of parse through the, uh, the comprehensive plan as mentioned, and the LWRP, and the handout, um, subsequent to the GIS information. It is just a couple bullet point items that we want to bring to the table to kind of get responses on, um, in terms of interest in submitting, um, infrastructure improvements such as, um, you know, the pedestrian bridge that was identified. Um, that would be a great amenity for the village, obviously. Um, obviously, you know, we're looking at, um, not a small cost for something like that and permitting and, and things of that nature. Um, so, you know, not to get tied down on one or, or, um, just a couple of items. We've listed a few of them, and for the, the folks, uh, virtual, I can read off what we've identified, um, as part of Zone Four in the comp plan. Um, so we have the pedestrian bridge listed, uh, vehicular circulation improvements, um, the, uh, kind of a common green space, public gathering space in front of the existing barns, um, a festival site on the waterfront, um, the small pocket park or plaza near, uh, the back where Copper Leaf Brewing currently is, um, maybe, uh, clearly defined bike lanes and, and organizing the, your pedestrian and vehicular traffic a little bit better. Um, and then possibly, uh, getting into something like a information center, um, to display all the great history of Shane Place in the village. Um, Zone Five, we, we, we anticipated maybe some of this focus study, um, expanding a bit. So, um, some of the things we identified in Zone Five would, um, you know, be things like the vegetation buffer that does get into the, uh, the Powers', um, uh, property, and, um, a more centralized plaza and some mixed-use spaces. Um, in the LWRP, as you can, um, see on the next page, uh, what we, what we thought was interesting was some of the sketches that were, um, you know, prepared back in 2005 and 2006 when it was adopted are, are very applicable to some of the issues you're seeing today. So the, the lack of a, kind of a strong physical edge on that canal path, um, is really the, the cause of this erosion. I mean, there's other causes, you know, people wandering off the path and throwing stones and what have you. But I think what you're seeing is the shrink, you know, because of the volume of people, because of the activities.
It's heavily traveled.
Yeah, people want to get to the water, and that's, that's kind of, you know, whether or not we respond to that in this concept plan is up for discussion, but, um, you know, uh, I think that's a, you know, to solidify the edge, um, so then you have the people using the canal path, um, walking, stroll, strolling with strollers, with dogs. They have a place to go back and forth, or you have more of a passive use. It doesn't necessarily all have to be, uh, a boat dock or a kayak or, or activities. It could be used for passive use for, for, you know, some benches, some, um, just people watching, what have you. So, um, I thought those two sketches that we, we have brought into this document show really well, and really, you know, from my, you know, as I look at this, it's...
Which ones are you...
I don't think we have this.
Who, I, I think it's...
Where is it? Am I missing it?
I don't know. I think we've got... Share. I'm looking for the pictures.
Oh, yeah.
Share.
For sure.
Because it might be attached.
Oh, we are happy, okay.
Um, so...
Okay, I'm good.
You know, just a couple really simple vignettes that were prepared for the LWRP that really, you know, treats the whole space all the way to the water. So, um, just something to revisit now, now that we are going, uh, to submit for the CFA. So all, all things up for discussion. Obviously, the, again, the meaning, or the reason for the meeting is to really get focused, you know? There's, there's a limited amount of time. Our goal is to leave here with a clear direction, obviously. We will share with you before submitting this concept plan and to get any comments and concerns and issues like, uh, expected budget, things of that nature, so... So let's, let's talk a little bit about budget before we get to the project schedule. Um, the, you know, we will be submitting, as mentioned, and as part of the RFP, an opinion of probable costs of, of these improvements. So where that is taking us is that, um, and Frank can jump in as well, but typically the state will want to, want the municipality to be able to match the grant. Sometimes it's not a 25%.
25%.
Okay, so your contribution will be 25%.
And it can be, some of it can be incurred as well.
So if the village has a number in mind that's easily digestible with your budget and your funding, we'd want to know that before we, you know, uh, design something that is not feasible for the village and therefore...
Before you do the $40 million...
Yeah. You know, the glass façades on the barns or whatever. So, um, if, and that could be, you know, something that comes later this week or today, or, but if that has been discussed, we'd want to get that information so we can design around...
We haven't had a discussion about any specifics of our budget for this. I think also because we knew that, you know, it's still this very contracted timeframe, but, um, you know, the discussion really that we had was a, a smaller piece initially, you know?
Hmm.
And, uh, when was the presentation about doing a ban? You know, 'cause we, that's something else that we were looking at, and so that was a while back, that was last year. Yeah, but that, that is still, um, is something that we're looking at. And, um, we've had our financial advisors put together all the paperwork and that's something, yeah, so that's something we can look forward on.
For what?
A bond again, for, yeah, for...
For bonding, okay, great. Um, so, yeah, I guess we have the schedule in the document, and it's really, um, you know, we'll go through that obviously, 'cause there's very little wiggle room, but do we, can we get any feedback from the board at this time in terms of scope, uh, amenities, you know, pedestrian bridge? I mean, we could start there, um, low-hanging fruit kind of stuff, or are we looking at improvements on the water, um, limited to, you know, improving the edge, the docks?
I, I think that really was the discussion that you, yeah, that we all had, is really looking at that, that piece, you know, right where the engineers were coming in, where there wasn't, there's a pump out, where's it, down by Aladdin's? And then there's the pavilion. And just, we'd, we'd spoken about, um, from that corner, just maybe, you know, widening that, making it a promenade. Uh, I think we should look at a possibility of having some docking there. There's been a lot of feedback from people who are wanting to be able to dock and charge their boats, you know, all that kind of stuff, having bollards that are, have electricity, things like that. And I know the sand patch is already, they've applied to have some permitting for, uh...
Well, we don't, I'm sorry to interrupt, 'cause I think I'm saying the same thing. It, it either went through my head, or I said it. I can't remember.
Do you remember if you said it out loud?
I can't, okay. Where the dock is that was done in the last round of improvements of Shane Place, actually from that point to, um, just before the North Main Street Bridge, that whole area there might lend a possibility for more dock, docking space, in other words, to extend in that direction as well. I think this is a point for me, the starting point is to establish the guidelines, the scope. This board needs to do, we're doing this them a disservice, not to give them all the information as clear a fashion as we possibly can, so they can make a successful grant application. And we are remiss in that if we get too broad a scope here, because we're, I do not feel that we have engaged the public at all, and that is a key component for, for any municipality, but most especially for a village this size. Um, our residents are extremely vested in their village. It's very personal for them. Uh, as for, for the city of Rochester that you mentioned, it might be a little more impersonal, a lot more people coming in, but this is very personal. This is like an extension of our, of our home, you know, our living.
True.
So I think that to feel comfortable, I would certainly want to have a lot more input from our residents to know what, what would be, is this a shared vision? To have a, a wider promenade and more dockage, is that a priority for them? I would like to know this information.
Right.
So, as far as the grant is concerned, at this time, if we were able to get sort of a laser focus on this and concentrate on the canal path improvements, um, since we have a timeline working with the Army Corps of Engineers, and I do have some questions...
Well, it's actually Canal Corps, Canal Corps, I'm sorry.
But I do believe that they would be involved, are they not?
They would have, they would have definitely a review authority, for sure.
Correct.
So we, you know, we've worked with the Canal Corps successfully and have good relations with them. Um, so, yeah, basically you have the Canal Blue Line, um, which will be part of this project, so anything on, on their property is going to be subject to their review.
Yeah, sure. So if, if we were to be able to define the scope of the project of being from this point by the North Main Street Bridge to this point by the State Street Bridge, for instance, as an example, would that be suffi, I know that we've talked about cloning and future, and it just seems at this time, given our very short timeline, and we don't want to make any missteps, and we want to make sure that we can engage the public.
Yeah.
Given those...
Right. Um, I, I just want to speak to engaging the public. So that, in a way, Lily, that's exactly why we're referencing the comp plan and the LWRP. Um, our assumption is that, you know, a lot of, um, a lot of these same people were authors of that, um, those documents, and those documents were vetted over years, I, I believe, from my recollection. So, we're not, um, intending to come in with any kind of new, uh, recommendations. Uh, we do want to rely heavily on these previous publications, um, just for that.
Certainly, and, and I think, having sat on the, the planning board and this board, I see those documents as guidelines, perhaps, for any decisions that we make going forward. It's not to replace, um, public opinion on specific projects that this would be. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yes, some people were engaged in that process, that's true. But there are a lot more people who would like to know exactly how we, we're talking about implementing that plan. So while I appreciate what you're saying, I, I guess another part of me has a representative of the people that wants to make certain that, that all who are interested are engaged. So that's my opinion. I would like to see us stay very focused about this one portion, and all the rest of it frankly is overwhelming me a little bit at this time, because there's so much to consider, you know, traffic pattern patterns and privately owned property and parking. It just, I, I start getting...
Yeah, I don't think, you know, sorry, sorry to interrupt, but I, I don't think we really were going down that path. I think you were talking about in the overall context of what has been adopted in the comprehensive plan. And having served on the compliance committee, I can tell you, we had numerous published serets, surveys, inputs. So I'm confident in that document, and also it was recently revised, I mean, just between the last few years. So, um, I think, you know, it's relatively current, um, you know, in terms of where this is all...
in terms of where this is all going. I agree that let's stay on the canal path kind of thing, you know, I think that's probably the best way for us to proceed. Again, given the timeframe, given sort of, you know, let's bite off what we know we can hopefully chew before, you know, the end of the month, and, you know, really take a look at that holistically, you know, on the canal path. I think that's probably, that's my understanding of what you're saying as well.
And money. Is that...
Yeah, I just, I'll comment for a moment too. I agree with that. I think that keeping the projects narrowly defined is a good thing. The comprehensive plan is a new document from 2019, but it does say, keep in mind, notes that the renderings presented in the concept plan and associated graphics are purely illustrated and do not represent any form of plan for the future. And so, it says this concept plan functions as a guideline and reference point when considering future development proposals. And I think that, you know, some of the ideas are great, but we give any public input as well as input from the historical preservation board and planning board, and we would not claim that as far as this particular phase of the...
And I would anticipate that that would come. So, let's project it forward. We submit concept plan, we receive a grant, you digest the grant, you figure out how much investment you want to make, then the concept gets refined into design development, which would then begin the public review process, and you might have a project or two or a plan that deviates a little bit from the concept plan, but that all circles back to the state in their review of the project.
And my understanding is, and help me with this, and so we all understand this, that we're just kind of getting something in the hopper here. This is a conceptual plan, we know we want to do something, we know that the canal path does need work, we just had another chunk fall off into the canal three days ago. So, you know, that's, that's where we're going. So, that's sort of the first phase, but even whatever we submit at this point can be tweaked and refined, as you're saying, with public input, other boards, like correct.
Yep, you'll need a specific, once the grant is awarded, you'll need a specific work plan, a detailed work plan that you would provide to the agency that you're working with. And from there, that process will be a RFP and all of that will be fleshed out at that point.
Right.
So, I think what you're saying is correct in that this needs to get in, get the grant application in, and the idea here is in the short term is to get the award.
Yeah.
And then from there, the details can be sort of fleshed out.
Yeah, then we all work together and we come up with really the best possible result for our community, you know.
And if that includes a public participation component as part of that process going forward, then you wrap that together.
Sounds good to me. Yep, yes, terrific.
I have a comment from, I have a comment from trustee Spencer, she wanted me to read.
Oh, sure.
Can you speak to how married we will need to be to the concepts we did for the grant, should we receive the grant? I'm very concerned about assuring we have public input for whatever the final project is, should we receive the grant?
So, we're, we just, just... Anything you want to add to that? I mean, I think we kind of, you know, that in fact, we're just about getting something in and then let's really refine it and work together to get something for the community.
This is for Sarah and me. I think as we, as we dig into the application itself, particularly on the public participation side, we will be, we should be documenting what has been done to date. Okay, so you're taking credit for the outreach that you have completed to get to this point. We'll have to just figure out in terms of the application itself, how we're wrapping that in in terms of, once the grant is awarded, how that gets, depending on the program, we need to make sure that we have eligible cost to kind of bring that in, bring that into the next, or at a minimum, just essentially state that we're doing, we're going to be doing additional outreach as part of this effort, once the, once the grant is awarded. So, you know, it sounds like no matter what, you're committing to that, so we want to be able to state that we're, that the village is committing to that, that additional outreach to help with the plan development and ultimately execution will be happening. So, we'll, we'll make sure that we're cognizant of that and how that gets...
Incorporated.
Buttoned up, sort of wrapped into the application.
That's great.
Okay.
That's wonderful. May we also entertain any comments from individuals who have shown up to this, taking the time out of their day to be here? Sure, of course. Yeah. Oh, I see a lot of...
A couple comments.
Name and address just for...
For our Corvuseli, Washington Avenue. Since 1993, when we did the first of eight capital projects that transformed Shane Place and won us the best downtown revitalization award in New York State through National League Cities for our work, one of the important concepts that was considered in all the work that we did was consideration of the historic resources, which makes Shane Place the best preserved historic real warehouse district remaining on the Erie Canal and Canal District in New York State. And I think before any design is done, you've got to come up with a list of character defining landscape features of that district. For example, when we located the original plazas, instead of having, planning to have a promenade the whole length, we sort of focused it in one area where there was actually historic port activity occurring, both for coal fueling, which happened where about 32 is, and before that, potatoes were loaded onto the canal, was the location. The same thing actually happened in front of Flower Hall, but one of the unique sort of charming characteristics that makes Shane Place so unique is kind of the winding, narrow path character that both the towpath has and the street itself has, and that's something as you, you know, you don't want to do so many improvements that you transform it into something where it loses its unique, narrow, village-like historic character. The other comment I wanted to make is there's a gas dock, one of the priorities, I designed a canopy for that, which is in the village archives, and we had money and our state representative changed and we lost some money because a different party was elected. But I think reuse of that gas dock is something that should be a high priority as part of this grant project. I think if, I agree with the comments that you sent about increasing the public's access to the water, but I think, again, I want to reiterate the comments I made at the last meeting, you don't want to create a wave pool like Fairport has, where the waves reverberate back and forth against hard edges on each side of the canal. We don't have that right now, and we, our port is somewhat unique, it's an embankment, and actually, it's over 210 feet wide, it's different from Fairport, we have, it has a distinct visual character, and I think you need to make a list of all those features before you design anything to make sure that we're not injuring things that are critical to the unique views that we all love and cherish and have been shown in the Quonset terminal. The other thing I saw in your list from the, you know, there's this lingering idea of a pedestrian bridge. We've investigated that bridge several times. At one point, we had a free bridge that we could have taken from the city of Rochester, and at that time, this was probably close to 20 years ago, it would have been a quarter of a million dollars just to get it in place and without the cost of the ramp. Concerns I have about that bridge, it's a lot of money to spend on a pedestrian bridge, and I'm not sure it has that much value. To provide handicapped, accessible ramp on Shane Place would take a tremendous amount of real estate in the area where there's not a lot of real estate. It would also take a tremendous amount of expense. I would also say that for the village, one of the character defining views of the village is the view of Shane Place from the North Main Street Bridge, and each time this issue has come up in putting in the last comp plan, and I think it was marginal that that idea got put in the comp plan, is do we really want to alter one of our signature views of Pittsburgh Village by putting in a modern pedestrian bridge in what really is unique, because right now, it's, it's, it's our money shop. So, those are all just a few thoughts.
Thank you, and I think there were really cogent comments, and I also, I really agree with you regarding, you know, for example, you cited Fairport. You know, Fairport has its own identity. I think frankly, it's a little more sort of industrial, you know, the box factory, it has a very different vibe, you know, and I think you, the work you did really spoke to that, and I agree, I think, you know, we're more sort of agrarian, you know, we have the silo, we have the little buildings that, you know, the beans were stored and barns, you know, we have a very different feeling here. And so, we're not Fairport, we're unique, we're really special, we definitely have different views and view sheds than Fairport does have. So, I totally think you've really cited that in a great way and really brought that to the forefront. There were some other people who wanted to speak, yes. The Limbax back, yeah.
I just have one question, sorry. In the State Street. I just have one question about the ownership of the property. Is the village proposing to buy it or that this development that you're talking about?
The Canal Corporation owns the property, and we're responsible.
Because it has power to show place association.
Yeah, oh, well, they're just identifying different properties along the canal, but not where the path is that we're talking about.
Oh, so these pictures in the proposal for the side hall may have had this discussion.
I'd like to speak to that as well because I have similar confusions on here. It seems like about half of these things are on private property, and I'm not aware of any easements that we have from them, so I think that, and I'm specifically looking at Zone Four and Zone Five.
I'm looking at the canal path piece that we are talking about.
So, I think what we're talking about now is narrowing down, so it's only on the right way that we have.
Yes.
I see this whole picture here is not being discussed, right?
That, oh, from the comp plan? That was a conceptual drawing from the comp plan.
Right.
No, 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 we're not. We're talking literally, as I said at the beginning of the workshop, is where, you know, where we have the temporary fencing up where the erosion is on the embankment, we're looking at that canal path portion, you know, that stretch along the canal.
I appreciate that comment, though. I had the same confusion, and I think that we've narrowed down a little bit.
Well, I'm agreeing with everything you talked about so far.
Okay, yeah, Lisa, you had a...
Lisa, call according myself, please. First of all, I would love to see this drawing where I have the region, is there a way that I can get this where I can pull it up so I can see this?
Yeah, I believe the best thing would be to access it through the village website and...
Yeah, and a larger, yeah.
Number two, I do like Lily's, Lily's comment about when we do decide to put more dockage, I do agree that people are loving to come and dock and get off and enjoy their restaurants. I also like the idea of maybe using more of the space where people aren't sitting, because I don't want to get to the same predicament as we do with cars, right? If you're sitting in a beautiful space overlooking the water, but instead you're looking at a bunch of boats. So, I just want to make sure we're careful about where we place the docks, so that if it's pedestrian friendly mostly, then it stays that way, so that we can look at the water.
Yeah, I think that's a great comment, and I think we're all, I think we're all sensitive to that too, you know, and we also have where the sand patch pulls it, you know, there's other things going on, you know, and just getting back to the kayak launches, I know the town just put in, you know, the accessible launch that's further down the canal, I don't know if you all are aware of that, it's on the other side of the Monroe Avenue Bridge, they just dedicated it a few weeks ago, actually.
Yep, on last Monday.
Yeah, a week ago, and it's great. So, it's where the, well, there's town, there's town buildings there.
And there are town DCW buildings.
The water.
It's on the other side.
Water.
Oh, and you're near the arena?
Opposite Seventy-Five and Monroe.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and what's great about that is parking, it's a security area. Yeah, so, that's how sure we need, you know, some big kayak launch right in the middle.
Right, that brings up a great point. So, you know, is there a need for another kind of active use kayak launch in the village? Probably not, because you have that and it's not a far paddle.
And it would conflict with the traffic, there's so much traffic on the...
Yeah, covered back and forth with a couple kayaks, you know.
I mean, I thought that was a perfect location for that launch, I really did.
The other thing to note from Lisa's comment would be, you know, as far as a dock goes and a boat tying up to that dock, so you could have, say you build 200 meter feet of dock and you have maybe a hundred, you know, half and half have cleats for a dock to tie to, some of it doesn't. You can kind of control some of the activity that way, or some of the use that way, I should say, or populate with like furnitures or things of that matter. So, you talk maybe utility hookups, electric and water, and maybe that's only a portion of that.
Right, right.
Some of that stuff could be somewhat controlled through the design.
Yeah, that's a good point, thank you, yeah.
David Ferris, 27, I just want to add some comments, I served on a comprehensive plan committee, and I went back to the point that trustee like you had made about that concept around, that was merely pie in the sky of potential ideas. We clearly rejected the pedestrian bridge, it was cost about 20 years ago, the estimated million dollars, it'd be elevated to clearance for boats and the sightlines and things, and ADA compliance would list, it was not anything seriously proposed. The same with the flow through there traffic wise, that was just in a concept, we didn't really have a time as a committee because we had a deadline, we don't want to turn, to go back where those plans were given to us at the last minute to look at. As far as the canal frontage here, I hope it's not going to narrow it at all, it's a port of Pittsburgh for a reason, and that width is important for boats coming and going and turning in that space, so it's not tight. So, I hope it isn't going to bump it out into the canal further. I think that's a, you know, something.
Well, that's where the canal corp comes in.
That's where Canal Corporation comes in, they're already part of that request, you know.
Okay, because I think it does change the flow. As far as boats docking, that's a double edged sword, and I've had a few people, and I agree with Lisa, if you start having the capability of larger boats, all the boats come in there now on the Shane Place side, that's accessible to them. If you start putting in larger docking areas and cleats and things for larger boats, boats will stay for three days, they do on the Port of Pittsburgh side. So, imagine that would be your view escape.
Yeah, I think we've already covered that, I think we're all in agreement.
I don't think docking the boat should be a high priority. I think basically, fortifying that, increasing the walkway capabilities and flow, it should be the focus, not worrying about making it a marina, okay, in any way.
Yeah, I don't think we are a marina, I would agree with that, yeah.
No, you're talking about increasing the docking wide, I would put that secondary, where it's located, I would not get it in that key stretch, you're lucky to fortify the walkway right there.
Would, would just using the terminology boardwalk instead of dock, get to these comments, do you agree?
So, depending on the level of the tail and the slope of it, you know, it's not a problem for small boats to come in there now.
Yeah.
Okay, but if you start putting like the Port of Pittsburgh side, it's total concrete above, and big boats come in, when the music plays, boats will come two, three days ahead to tie up there. That's what will happen, and the other side should, I don't think that's the best use of that space, versus having people on shore that are enjoying the view escape.
Right, so I think my question, my point is, what you're seeing is kind of a reduced width of that canal path due to erosion.
Well, it looks great, I mean, do you need electrical hookups for people coming to tie up there? I don't think so.
Yeah, I mean...
That's a point of different usage.
It's exactly, you know, that's exactly why we're here to like, to understand the goals, as we say, goals and objectives and the needs of the village.[1687.85] To understand the goals, as we say, goals and objectives and the needs of the village. So, you know, we could be, I think we're talking the same, same...
That's why you give a historical perspective of the comp plan. You know, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, thanks so much, Jay.
So, fair to say no pedestrian bridge on this application.
Well, and also, you know, I mean, again, it was conceptual. I mean, you were bringing it up because it's in the comp plan, but it doesn't necessarily, even if there were a pedestrian bridge, I don't know that it would even go in that area, you know, because of the elevations. And I know we've actually touched on that very briefly, quite a while ago.
Yeah, I think the biggest, I guess the biggest attraction for that is now you have the field of parking behind the library, which helps to alleviate some of the stress on Shane Place.
Yeah.
But yes, there are challenges for sure. Cost being one of them, accessibility being another.
But I think what we really, you know, the takeaway here, because we're heading towards 6 o'clock, is that we're looking at the canal path. We're not looking at pedestrian bridges. We're not looking at, you know, the barns and being activated as a plaza. We're not looking at any of that. The focus is on the canal path and not too much beyond that. That's what, that's the takeaway that I'm hearing. And so, that's really where we're going to be looking. We're not looking at the other elements that were included in the comp plan at this point. You know, the festival site and small plaza, you know, that kind of thing. So, I think, you know, that way we really do keep the focus pretty tight. And also with the timeframe, I think it's practical at this point, yeah.
Okay. Great discussion. So, that, we'll just wrap up with a couple more items. One is the project schedule. So, we'll leave here today and get with our design team, who will be on site tomorrow morning from Ithaca.
Thank you guys, take care.
And begin the preparation of the concept plan. We anticipate being able to share a draft of that concept plan with the board next week from Monday, the 25th. And then we would ask for any comments on that plan the following day. You know, the urgency there is then, we would then begin to get into the opinion of problem cost.
Yeah.
The estimate. And give Sarah and Frank a couple days to get everything uploaded.
All that time.
Sorted out.
We'll be populating in advance of that, obviously, a lot of things.
And then you'll be tweaking as soon as, okay.
So, we have to demonstrate to you that we're good for the other part of the money. Because why would you bother applying for a grant that we can...
So, if we go for 400,000, you have to notice.
Yeah. So, we have to, we have to fill up with 25%.
Correct.
And where would that money be coming from? That's what we need.
Well, we have to work in our next budget and we can go with more funding actions.
We're going to have to sort of work on that because what we talked about at the beginning was the different grant programs. And the share, the local share is different depending on the program.
That's true.
So, it's not...
I'm thinking the L W R P was, yeah.
Yes, it's not across sports. So, that's something we're going to have to... And part of this is what, what's the project? What's the budget? And what grant programs are we pursuing? And all of that needs to sort of come together and we can, we can look at that critically to see what is it that, what are you going to need?
Okay, so this is a question I have. Based on other grants that the villagers have received. Sometimes it takes a couple of years before the grant money comes through. We have to put the money upfront for the project and then we get paid back. Is that how this works as well?
Some, like the state does, where the state parks.
Yeah, most state parks, yeah, most of them are. But that's where we were talking about doing a bond or a ban. Because the financial advisor said, well, we could bond up to 3 million, I think, almost.
Yeah, we have the building...
But we wouldn't, you know, but I'm just saying, they gave us a grant.
But we could put a ban out.
Yeah.
Do the project, submit.
Get the money back.
Get the money, pay the ban out.
You know, so, and that's really, when I was at Nicon, that's what so many villages do. They just roll it, you know, depending on what grant you're going for and then they just pay down their, their ban. And then go back in and apply for another grant, you know? Because we all have small budgets. And so, you know, a lot of these projects would be a significant percentage of our overall budget, you know? I mean, you know, just to give, you know, anybody listening, you know, who's online too, what's going on in our village now between the bridge and, you know, they're upgrading all the sidewalks and bringing them into compliance for ADA requirements. That's an 8.4 million dollar project. There's no way we could have ever done that in our village. So, unless we're doing, you know, the bonds or bans. So, you know, we've already done all the groundwork on that, really, and have the timeframes and everything from our financial advisor, so, yeah.
Another point of clarification. If this project were to come, come to fruition, then change in the canal path enough, would we then be responsible for maintenance of that going forward? Would the canal corps still maintain it?
We're always responsible for the canal path.
No, but right now, the canal corps is responsible for the...
Oh, you're always responsible for the embankment.
What I'm saying is going forward, let's say we have cement, you know, whatever the new project, then we are responsible for that, not the Army Corps of Engineers.
The canal corps.
Canal corps, I keep doing...
I know, I think the same, I know, I know.
I guess, yes.
Well, now, we have, we have the bump outs with the hard edge down by Aladdin's that were done. How many years ago?
About 20.
Okay, but we're responsible for that, ban of 20.
Going forward.
Okay, yeah. So, we know what we're going to be taking on. 94, thank you. Yeah, okay. Okay, so we're, we're hitting six, so I just, I know everybody's on a...
We're at next steps, which is just a couple of action items noted. So, the, as far as the village grant liaison point person, is that going to be Dorothy? So, all communication relative to, hey, we need this, we need...
The copy door's being on every phone call, just so, you know, we're all in the same league, yeah.
Great, and then typically we'll submit letters of support from...
Already getting them.
Okay.
Yeah, we have tons writing one, we have a number of property owners already writing them, business owners down there, you know, anything that you, any other entities that you can think of that would be helpful as well.
Any elected officials?
We can get a bunch.
I mean, that would be helpful.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's not, you know, too difficult to get those.
No, no, we're on it.
Yeah, that was, that was...
I'll circle back with you guys about that. So, make sure, you know?
Sounds good.
Yeah. Everybody's excited about it.
Is there a secret determination in terms of lead agency? Is that the right question?
Why does Seeker come into it? Does it come during this process or after we get the grant? Does Seeker come into it?
There's, there's two things. If you've already completed Seeker for the project, you would provide evidence of that. If you have not, you're responsible for providing a par one E A.
They will do, yeah.
Okay, so we would have, that's what we'll have to do for this.
Okay.
So, it will need to be completed?
Yes.
Okay, this is prior to construction and, you know, all the approvals being issued, so... But the state in terms of the grant application is looking for either evidence that you've completed it or evidence that you will complete it. And the par one is the vehicle for the first step of completing it.
Because all we have is a concept. So, I don't know how we make secret determination on merely a concept without a plan.
Yeah, and that's, and that's why you'll, and that's why we're asking because we're not entirely certain whether you've done something already. So, that answers the question.
No, these. Yeah.
Who completes the...
We will.
Okay, so that'll be, okay, great.
Is this, everything's long form, is it not? Because of the historic designation of the area? Is SHPO involved in this?
There'll be, there'll be likely triggers on type ones. So, we'll do a long form on this.
And where does SHPO come in? Not at this stage, not at...
Well, you'll need to, typically you would consult with SHPO because there'll be, well, you would consult with SHPO if there's estate funding or approval component, which there will be. So, there'll be a SHPO consultation later in the process. So, that'll be done as part of the sacred, as part of the sacred process.
That kicks in.
But right now, win the grant.
We're just getting, yeah, getting the hopper.
Getting the hopper, right.
All we have is a dollar for half a dollar and a drink. And it's supposed to be on there. And we want to put on the show. Okay.
Great things have to start somewhere, right?
That's right, yeah. I know this has been really helpful too.
We appreciate the time. I know it was a short request, a short time.
It's short for you guys too. We appreciate you making the effort. Coming in from Buffalo. Great, okay.
I think the biggest challenge working with us, because otherwise we're lovely to work with, is our scale. Our scale is so much more small and diminutive and human scale than probably a lot of things that you work with.
No, we, we, we do a lot of it. We do small, medium, large projects. We're, you know, we're used to it.
We're small but mighty.
Turn it on.
All right, you make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
A second.
Go on, call.
Justy Hackett. Justy Hackett? Trustee Satter?
Aye.
Mark Palmer?
Aye.
When she passes.
Great, thanks so much, everyone. This is so helpful.